We are gonna call it order this May 4th, 2023, meeting of the Centerville Town Council. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if folks could remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have got a number of minutes in our packet from a whole slew of meetings, two from April 6th, budget work session and a regular meeting, a budget work session from the 13th, and a meeting minutes from April 20th. I would suggest that we consider these in bank, as it were. Is there any changes that need to happen to any of those, or added amendments?
Well, it's a small thing. I know I wasn't present on April 6th, so I couldn't have voted on a resolution, so.
Where do we see that?
Where do you, did I do that? Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
On page one of April 6th.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right. Although I do support it, but.
Do we have that change made?
I will make that change.
Is there a motion to accept these?
I'll make that motion to accept, noting that correction.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move into our Citizens Forum. Before anybody comes up to the microphone, we'll let Carolyn read the Citizens Forum statement.
Welcome to this meeting of the Centerville Town Council. This is a public meeting, and we welcome your participation. By attending, you acknowledge that this session is recorded and aired live on QAC TV 7. During the meeting, we ask that you turn your cellphones off and hold personal conversations outside the meeting room. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. The Town Council respects and appreciates your desire and right to convey your message freely, and in keeping with the dignity of proceedings, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. If questions are a part of your comments, we refer those to the appropriate individual. Thank you.
Anybody that would like to share their comments is welcome to come up, and we'll see if anybody has signed up. Just tell us your name and where you live. You don't have to say your address.
Okay, Ben Tacuni with Plastic Free QAC, and I live in Graysonville, Maryland. Well, good evening, Centerville City Council. It is a big day today, May 4th, when your president, Steve Klein, is gonna introduce the ordinance to eliminate plastic carry-on bags, or, how we prefer to refer to as, bring your own bag ordinance. We just want you to know that Plastic Free QAC wholeheartedly support this bill, and will do anything that we can to help see this become law. This is a solid bill with the important 10-cent fee for paper, paper bags, that the merchant gets to keep to put support buying paper bags. This 10-cent fee has shown other Maryland locations to incentivize people to remember to bring their own reusable bag. This bill also includes the definition of a reusable bag as having stitched handles. That's very important, because in locations where they didn't use that definition, they used a thickness of plastic, they said, and when that definition was used, some of the large merchants made big, thick bags that they called, oh, they're recyclable. And of course, technically, they are, but in reality, people don't reuse them. So it's making things worse, really. We have submitted a few little suggestions, little tweaks to Mr. Klein. One of them is to clarify the exemption for plastic bags used in dry cleaning. Another is an exemption, to exempt pharmacies from charging the 10 cents for paper bags when the bag contains prescription drugs or medicine. We also suggest added a start date of November 1, 2023, and added a definition of violation. The Maryland General Assembly have been slow in attacking this issue. They did almost pass a bag ban in 2020. It passed it in the House, but ran out of time in the Senate before they had a time to vote, and they actually ended the session early, so they didn't have a chance to vote in the Senate. We thought that, well, then the next year's gonna be a shoe-in, but it wasn't. Nothing happened, and the General Assembly has not acted on this bill since. The strategy among advocates, and I mainly am talking about Trash Free Maryland and the Zero Waste Maryland chapter of the Sierra Club, both of whom we work with, they suggested that we focus on local action. So on that front, and I have submitted the full list, 11 Maryland entities, that's counties and cities, have passed this type of legislation, and eight more geographic entities are currently working on it. In terms of around the country, 11 states, including Delaware, have passed this ban on carry-out plastic bags. Locally, in Greenhills County, Plastic Free has collected a list of 100 businesses and organizations in support of the bag ban, and I have submitted that as well. So I commend the city council for addressing this important issue. It is sorely needed to protect our beautiful environment and the Chesapeake Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Jamison.
Pat Jamison, okay. Can I think all of you have your bags?
We do, we do. Thank you.
My name is Pat Jamison, and I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters. And stand up, we have three of our board members here tonight.
Welcome.
Liz, Ann Barbara, and Carolyn. We've been in support of Plastic Free since Vinte started in 2019. She came to several of our meetings. We think that you are doing a wonderful thing, because the environment is so important, and we know what plastic bags do. But I think there's even more harm from plastic than we even realize. Toxins, other things, so we need to start somewhere. We need to protect our environment. I commend you as a Town Council, and I salute Plastic Free Greenhills County. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Pino.
I am going to have to work up here and make a little room, so please don't start my time yet.
We're on the edge of our seats, Bob.
I'm Bob Pino, and I'm in Optical Galleria right down the street here, and I'm not gonna be one of the favorite people here today, but I'm speaking against the plastic bag ban, not because I don't, I love plastic. For 20 years, we've been using this paper bag to give our customers their goods, okay? For 20 years, we've been giving them a bottle of lens cleaner, which we recommend they bring it back and we refill it for a dollar. We've been pretty lucky and successful, so now I can buy in bulk, there's 100 lens plus in one plastic bag, okay? When my company sees it good to give one, they put one in each plastic bag, okay? So we're doing it, this out is 2016, okay? I still have the bag. But in order to make a pair of glasses, one plastic bag, two like this, four stickers, all plastic rubber, the frames come in plastic bags, everything comes in plastic bags, so we use a lot of plastic bags, okay? My companies, one of the companies sends me a catalog, it comes in a plastic bag, okay? Everything we do around my store involves plastic. Our lenses, your guys' lenses, which I see a lot of customers here, are made of plastic, okay? Easton thought it would be a great idea to put a plastic bag van in, and now they are telling me that in order, when I give my customer a plastic bag, I have to, not a paper bag, I have to charge them 10 cents, and I not only have to charge them 10 cents, but I gotta put it on their invoice. I'm sorry, ma'am, your frame is $750, your lens is $432, your total is $1,433, and by the way, I'm charging you 10 cents for the bag, okay? And am I gonna put it on there? No, this is a government-mandated bag, it has to be on the invoice. If I don't put it on the invoice, I can be fined $25 for the first offense and $50 for the second offense. How would you like if I charged you $1,000 for a pair of glasses, and then I charged you 10 cents for a bag? You're gonna look at who? You're not gonna look at the guys up there, you're not gonna look at the government, you even look at me and say, you're a cheap SOB, okay? My guilt, okay? Back to our clean. These frames, this is our brand that we sell, this is the cleanest possible way currently to make a pair of glasses. They're injected molded. There's two little tabs at the edge of these frames that do not get used. Everything else gets used. A regular plastic bag, a regular plastic frame acetate, 80% of that frame is waste, okay? So there's, what I'm getting at is there's lots of waste, okay? But, I'm against it. Shoplifting is a big issue. You're encouraging people to walk in with a bag and walk around the store. Law enforcement can maybe give a little bit of insight on that. So I'm against it. I use it, I'm obviously trying to be as clean as possible, but please don't charge, make me charge a dime and fine me if I do not charge a dime, I think that is ridiculous.
But to be clear, I've heard from another business in town that I think we wanna do right by. The problem is not with the ban, the problem is with the 10-cent fee to charge, you have to charge the bags.
Well, for me, that's the main thing, but there's a slippery slope, too, because you start at the carry-bag, what happens, will they ever say? And you'll say, gosh, it'll never happen. We can't stop them from you getting goods in plastic bags, because everything comes in plastic bags to me, okay? But it's a slippery slope, you know? Who would think that California would try to ban diesel gasoline by the year 2036? But it's, they're talking about it right now, okay? So if this happens, then all of a sudden, everybody's cost goes up, because somehow they gotta figure out another way to get me the lenses, so I can get them to you guys in really, really beautiful condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the extra time, I apologize. And as a matter of fact, I'm going to Salisbury University to do a presentation tomorrow about our clean manufacturing of glasses, which is kind of ironic.
Bob is the last person signed up, if anybody else wants to come up.
Okay.
Bob is a great guy, he even comes to the house for elderly patients, which is incredible.
Excuse me, I've gotta run to the, get this over.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's okay. You gotta get up to the microphone, though, otherwise we can't see you on TV.
My name is Carolyn Morsehead, I live in, I live outside of Centerville, but I shop in the town of Centerville. And I understand, I am a strong proponent of the ban of plastic bags, but I was wondering if there could be an exclusion for some of these really small businesses that, like Bob, that don't use that much plastic, or, and shouldn't be charged the 10 cents for the paper bags. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? About anything? Doesn't have to be about plastic bags, if not, we'll move on.
Can I ask a question of one of the presenters, please? I understand you presented to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners last week, maybe? Could you characterize for me, I was not in attendance, would you mind characterizing for me how that went with the county commissioners?
Yes, it was the high school kids that came and presented to the commissioners. They presented their petitions that they had collected at the high school, and were very proud of that. And that was really the basic presentation. I did give a presentation just to let them know how many other counties and cities in Maryland that have already passed and are working on passing this legislation, and I submitted that list to Carolyn, so that you can look at it. There are quite a number, as I mentioned in my talk, and that's all. I mean, they didn't say anything. Subsequently, we have talked to Commissioner Dominil, and he sounded like he was opening up to the idea. Previously, he has said, well, let's wait till the Maryland Legislature passes it. So maybe they're opening up to the idea, but I'm quite sure they're gonna watch you guys carefully and see where this, what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last time, anybody else? If not, we're gonna move into what is on here as the consent agenda, but it's only one item. It's a travel policy for Town Council members, Resolution 5-2023. This is something that I crafted with really consent of the whole council, for the folks that might be watching on TV, or here in the room. This is essentially to update our policy for how we pay for council travel to meetings. And I'll just real quickly say that with the passage of this, hopefully tonight, council members are required to pay all registration fees for conferences, trainings, and meetings. Council members are required to pay all travel expenses related to, but not limited to, hotels, mileage, and meals. Council members may submit reimbursable expenses related to those described above to the town of Centerville Finance Office for reimbursement following the attendance at such conferences, trainings, and meetings. So just, I think, having a little bit better policy for council member travel. We can clear this tonight, if folks want, I'm inclined to make a motion to, I'm not gonna make a motion in my own resolution, actually.
I'll make that motion to approve as presented.
Hold on a second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 7-2023, which council has had in front of them for quite some time, we've been talking about this in a number of meetings, is the updated personnel manual, really the work of Crystal Eball and the town attorney, Sharon Van Enberg. Good work here. We can talk about it tonight if we want to, or, or not. We can pass it right now, and I am inclined to do that as well, but what do we think? Do we wanna talk about it?
Well, I just have a few questions.
By all means.
Okay. Let's see, um, there's a few things I didn't quite understand, because it's, you know, it's a lot to read, so.
Yes.
Let's see, okay, and I can refer to page numbers, too, so.
Yep, yep.
Good, all right. And this really doesn't affect my inclination to approve this, okay? I just wanna, just wanna understand this better. Maybe there's some, you know, as a result, that when you make a revision in the future, you might wanna consider some of these things, so, okay.
This is.
Because I haven't even been working on it in a while, and it's like, well, it'd be good to close it out, and then, you know, work, there will always be.
It's always gonna have changes.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. It'd be good to close it out and just get it, and then, okay. On page 14, you mentioned employee, well, what, you know, what happens if an employee has drug or alcohol problems? And it kinda says that they're on their own, basically, they should go seek help or whatever, but we might consider having a drug and, you know, alcohol program, or employee assistance program.
Well, we do. So, well, we do have an employee assistance program, and, and that is something that is actually in the health benefit guide that I've actually, have also created, just to kind of help simplify all of the benefits that we offer. But that is through, and see, I think the reason that it is not specifically in the personnel manual is because the employee assistance program is offered through our health insurance, so not all of the employees utilize that health insurance, but we still do offer, and that is something that I'm trying to look into for future, is some kind of a program where we can have it available to all of the employees, and not just a free service through our health insurance.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't have to be free necessarily, but.
Right, but it will have to go to council, depending upon how much the program costs and everything, so, yes.
Let's see. I made these notes a couple days ago, I gotta remember what they are. You know, page 16. I didn't, I, but what is the retiree health reimbursement plan? I guess.
So the retirement health reimbursement account stipend, our plan, is because we are with a health co-op through Legit, we are not eligible, or we're not able to have a retiree group health plan. So back in 2015, the finance officer and I were working on trying to come up with a way to have an additional, like, just a benefit for retirees for continuing, at least, to offer a stipend, to help pay for medical costs, whether it's premiums or prescriptions, you know, Medicare fees. So, they, the council did approve to have a annual maximum reimburse, reimbursable amount of $2,400 for each eligible retiree, and we just recently, within the last year or so, had the plan amended, the plan document amended, to include that in order to be eligible, you also have had vested 10 years of service with the town in order to be eligible for joining that, the retiree stipend, or the help, the retiree HRA plan.
Okay. Okay. Okay, listen, like a general question, are, are all new employees required to be in the state retirement pension system?
Yes, it's a mandatory enrollment if they're eligible.
Is there anyone who's not in that?
Yes, whether they're ineligible because they're currently receiving state retirement from another agency.
Oh, okay.
Or if there was, in the very beginning of our partnership or agreement, if you had opted out, that was your one and only time.
Oh, okay. All right.
And that's a state mandate.
Okay. What's the difference between sick and safe leave and sick leave? I didn't get that one.
So the sick and safe leave was actually a federal law that was supposed to help protect for part-time employees, since they're not eligible to accrue leave, like full-time employees. The sick and safe leave is also to allow for part-time employees to have leave available to them for particular circumstances of illness, or whether there's some traumatic experience in their personal lives, such as abuse or violence, and that sort of thing, so that they have paid leave to use.
Okay, it's, um, okay, what is, well, I kinda know what family medical leave is, what is that, a separate thing that, from sick leave, or?
Yes, so that's, that's a federal law, the Family Medical Leave Act. So all government entities are, you know, must adhere to it, however, in order to, in order for our employees to be eligible for FMLA leave, the government has to have at least 50 employees or more. So I've spoken to our attorneys, and I prefer to keep the FMLA in there, because we are held by those, that law, and eventually, we will hit 50 employees, so at least it's in there for those purposes. But for now, if an employee tries to apply for the family medical leave, they would be ineligible based on the fact that we do not have 50 employees yet.
Okay. Well, I mean, but it doesn't talk about, like.
So what that does is it protects the employee for up to 12 weeks of paid or unpaid leave, whereas their job is, or their position is not protected if they were to be on extended, you know, leave for 12 weeks.
Okay. Was it paid leave for that amount of time?
It's paid or unpaid leave. That's what the Family Medical Leave Act protects, that employee. So they could not, they can run out of leave that they've used and be on unpaid leave, but they cannot be terminated during that time, because they're protected under that act.
All right. It's not really a separate leave category, it's just an umbrella that protects the employees.
It's just a job protection.
I need to come up with a better term for that.
It often overlaps with sick or short-term disability, something else, like, it will cover as well, but that just. Something else, like, it will cover as well, but that just protects the ability to have your job waiting for you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. On page 41, it talks about a Director of Administra, who's the Director of Administration? I didn't know we had such a thing.
Page 41.
Let's see if I can find it again.
And this is for...
Oh, see, yeah.
So this is, yeah, so our progressive disciplinary or disciplinary and corrective actions is one of the sections that is probably going to be, you know, further reviewed and tried to simplify.
Okay.
But the Director of Administration, which, you know, honestly, that would be more of the town manager for that position. So that could actually be changed to, you know, be approved by the town manager, as he has the authority for that.
I noticed a lot of things in that section.
No, that's okay, well, and when I was...
Okay, I'll leave it alone, then.
That's okay.
Okay.
The meeting you missed, we made you the Director of Administration.
And when I was working with the other, when I was working with the other attorney, Kevin Karpinski, in his office, a lot of what they put in may have been a general or used from another county or different policy, so.
Yeah, because it seemed to be some duplication.
It was just something I might have overlooked in all of the review, so.
Okay, all right. Well, we can fix that next time, then.
Good eye.
And that's all I had.
Well, I guess it can be amended or approved as amended.
Yeah, you can, we can change it tonight.
So you can change it tonight.
Well, if you wanna change that title, but the other things were like, a little more complicated.
Right, so, exactly.
The procedure, there's the procedure for discipline was, there were like two different paths, and it was like, well, who, you know, who chooses what path, and was it really an error?
It's a lot better than it was before, but it's, it's still, we're still, Sharon and I will be working on that.
Okay.
It's evergreen.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Always changing, always growing.
Okay. Well, that, that small change of Director of Administration's the town manager, then, right?
Correct, yep. I'll make that change, you know.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion? Move to approve with the edit on page 41, item C, from Director of Administration to Town Manager.
Second.
Oh, can I also add just one more? Because Sharon did point out one other correction. What page was that? 58, I believe. I just wanna make sure that that's at least on record, that on page 58, item 4E, in that paragraph, second, let me see, I guess it's the last sentence, where expensive other than an employee in the county service, it should actually say town service.
Right.
So I just wanna make that announcement, so that'll be on record.
Can you make your motion?
I will amend my motion accordingly, my motion accordingly.
Amend my second accordingly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are supposed to be roll-calling those votes. They have all been anonymous, unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Anonymous.
Thank you all.
Moving to new business now, ordinance 1-2023, FY 2024 budget. I will read that here, although my ordinance says 1-2022.
Oh, just, oh, I apologize. Yeah, we'll fix that by the next, when I do the next one out.
For the first reading, we'll say this is an ordinance for the purpose of adopting a budget for the Town of Centerville for fiscal year 2024. We will move into ordinance 2-2023, which is being sponsored by myself and Council Vice President Kaiser. An ordinance to the Town Council of Centerville to amend the town code to create a new chapter 102 of the town code regarding plastic bags to prohibit retail establishments from providing plastic carryout bags to customers. Any conversation at this point?
Um, yes.
All right.
Okay. The, in the whereas, I mean, most, I'm not sure if all these whereases are actually true, okay? For example, the first one, how much are we gonna save in tipping fees by banning plastic bags? I mean, is it really a significant cost? I mean, we're talking about lightweight plastic bags. I doubt, that it's a very large percentage of the tipping costs.
Okay.
Okay. Number two, I have not noticed, I mean, I live on a main street where I get a lot of trash, people tossed out of cars, most of it is paper bags and paper cups from fast food places. I don't get plastic bags from grocery stores, like, floating around my yard. So I think, I think generally, it's not an issue for the town. Maybe there's some other parts of the country where people are less neat about things, but...
They're at the edge of virtually every farm field.
Okay.
Whenever we get a wind, we could go find some real quick, if you wanted to.
Okay.
After the meeting?
Done. I'll take your word for it.
I would agree to strike number one, but not number two.
Okay. Okay, and I can understand number three, because some people probably think they can recycle them, and they can't, right? And they get jammed in their sorting machines, whatever. Okay. Number four, I think the production of paper bags also contributes to greenhouse gas emissions, and so do the production of carryout bags. All of those items produce greenhouse gases in their production. And there's been a study done by the UK Environment Agency that said that actually paper bags produce more greenhouse emissions during their production than plastic bags. I think the goal here really is to get people to recycle, I mean, to reuse the bags that they have, right? I'm not sure if banning plastic bags is really gonna help with that or not. I mean, some of the stores, I mean, went through, you know, one of the grocery stores went through a great effort to set up self-checkout, okay? And I don't see, maybe they have a way of dealing with paper bags and that, where they have to trust the customer to enter the right number of paper bags that they use when they checked out.
They're doing this in Easton, they're doing it in Salisbury, they're doing it in Chestertown.
Okay. What I'd like to see is have them, have the county do it, because I think what's gonna happen is people who, like, live in Graysonville, not the people who are pro-plastic bag, I mean, anti-plastic bag, rather than coming here to shop, they're gonna go over to Ken Island. Or the people who live in Ridgely are, will go to Denton instead of coming here on their way home from work, you know, because they just don't wanna deal with it. They don't wanna deal with the 10 cents, they don't wanna have to use their own bags, they're just generally against the concept. So I think it'll be detrimental to the businesses in town, and I thought this council was pro-business, and I don't see this ordinance heading, you know, contributing to that.
So I had asked about their response at the county commissioners for a similar reason. I can be really an advocate of this, but I hate to do it as an island with the rest of the county not. This should be a regional matter, and the fact they pursued it in, at the state level really indicates that it needs to be a broader base. Maybe before we vote for it, we'll hear a little more from the county about how they're viewing it, to see if we can bring them along and, and have it countywide, which would be really much more fair to our Centerville town businesses. I also wonder, sorry, Dan, I didn't...
Go ahead.
The 10 cent charge, I wonder if we can make that by the size of the bag? So the little small gift bags, like were illustrated in one of the presenters today, maybe that wouldn't be a 10% charge, but a grocery bag, the big brown paper bags might be...
So graduated, graduated costs based on the size and...
Right, right. The volume of the bag, just a thought on trying to have some equity here. Those are my comments. Sorry if I interrupted you.
No, no, that's fine. I'm afraid I'm gonna forget my comment if I don't, like, try to interrupt, but, no, I was thinking of that when you mentioned the county looking at this issue as well. It's like, if they did pass an ordinance, would it apply to us or not? Because it's not, it's not a zoning issue, it's, you know, so I don't know if that's...
Depends on how they drafted, but I think it could be applicable.
Right. Yeah, and, yeah, that would probably depend on what the other towns thought about it. So maybe I'll, we have a cog meeting coming up next week, and, you know, I'll bring it up with the other towns and see what they think about it.
At the request of the county administrator, I did forward a copy of this draft ordinance to him today, so he can see what we're doing and see if it's a possibility of mirroring the ordinance at the county level.
Yeah, we should at least be consistent, so.
So I wanna weigh in and just say, I, I see all sides of the arguments, and I think there's merit to all the points that have been brought forth this evening. One of the things that strikes me is when we look at the climate of the nation and the direction that I think we're inevitably going, it is one where plastic bags are gonna be a thing of the past. And where we jump on that train is obviously a matter of debate. One thing I'll say about Easton, since we do some shopping there, is we fall in that category, my family anyway, where I don't like paper bags. I don't think they're easy to hold on to. You certainly can't, if they do happen to have handles, lift anything that has any kind of weight to it. So it has absolutely put us in a position where we are using the cloth or, you know, stitch bags, and, and I took note, because I knew we were looking at this, I took note when I was at Walmart the last three times, to just kinda get a feel for what the general clientele was doing, and it was the majority of the folks that I saw in line, and obviously it's, you know, my experience only, were doing the same thing. I saw very little use of paper bags. And so I'm inclined to support it. I do like the idea of potentially having some conversations with our county commissioner counterparts, and if it's something that could be rolled out jointly at the county level and the town, then I think that is preferable and more pro-business, as the point has been raised. But conceptually, I'm in favor of moving in this direction at some point.
I could not be any more in favor of it. I'm excited to vote for it, and, you know, I, we are awash as a nation, a world, and a town and a county in, in, in plastic, right? And I think that what we're seeking here is a culture change. Whereas it's, the question is not one of convenience, it's, it's one of necessity, right? I mean, the average lifespan, the average use span of a plastic bag, how long you use it, is 12 minutes. They hang around for 1,000 years. That sounds like a crummy bargain, right? And I think we need to inspire culture change. I'm not prepared to wait for the county on this. I think we have to be kind of the laboratory, and we're behind many eastern shore municipalities already on this, and have already done it, that are implementing it now. And I think it's just something we have to do. I, I am willing to be flexible on the fee. In fact, in talking to, you know, Price Again, sent us a comment, and we heard it tonight from Optical Galleria, they don't wanna have that fee show up on the receipt, right? They wanna, Price Again almost struck me as, they wanna just cover it, they'll figure out a way to pay for it, but don't make me put that 10 cents on the receipt.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I think, I think we have to work through that. I mean, do we, the incentive there is, obviously, people bring their own bags, right? That's the, what you're trying to drive. And I think in a grocery store, when you're filling up the cart, you know, that's easy enough to do. I think in a place like Optical Galleria, even more so in Price Again, it's really an open door to shoplifting. And I guess I wasn't clear how big of an issue that was until very recently, and Price Again, so they're really struggling with shoplifting. And I think that, you know, their concern is, you bring in a bag from another store, right? It's gonna get potentially filled up with products from them. We don't, we don't want that to happen, we don't wanna incentivize that. But I do think we need to figure out a way to get plastic bags off the street. I mean, we have so much garbage in this, that you could, you could take volunteers on any stretch of road every week and fill bag and bag and bag of traffic, of trash, really anywhere you look. I mean, it's really something how we've come to throw these things away. So I am obviously fully supportive and look forward to the hearing and moving forward.
Are there any changes you want before we go to the public hearing in the next step?
We have some that were submitted. I think I can get those to you, and we can review those. And I, I think we ought to have a conversation about that fee.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I think, you know, if it's not on the receipt, if they don't have to pay for it, maybe that disincentivizes bringing your own bag. But I think, as Councilperson Johnson said, you know, you don't want paper bags, so you bring your own bag, you bring a bag with a handle. To me, that, that's a good thing to encourage.
And in the case of Optical Galleria and the hardware store, you know, most of the time, I don't even want the bag, you know, so just, at least the hardware store asks if you want a bag, okay? And it's like, most of the time, it's small parts you just carry out with your hand, it's like, I do that in grocery stores, too, if it's just a handful of items, so.
For sure.
But, you know, I mean, that would be the way to deal with it, is the customer know they're gonna pay 10 cents, and maybe they just don't want a bag after all.
There's probably only two of us up here that remember a mantra from the 70s, think globally, act locally. So there you go.
Let's do it. We'll talk more, maybe after the hearing, we'll talk about the changes.
I think we do have consensus around addressing the price point, possibly looking at some sort of graduated scenario, and then it seems to me that the greatest consternation in the business community really is whether they're forced to put that on the receipt.
Yes.
And while I think technology allows modification of most stores, printing of receipts, some of our smaller businesses don't have that technology, and so having to figure out how to do that with lesser technology could be a struggle, so, but I look forward to this coming back up.
Can we schedule a public hearing tonight? For June? The first Thursday in June, is that far enough away?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. New business letter C is the Centerville Trail Volunteer Bike Patrol. I'll hand it off to you.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Fred McNeil to come forward and join me for this presentation. And just double check, and does QACTV have the ticker? Thank you, sir.
What are...
I'll take it.
If you give it to anybody over 70, we'll be here all night.
Actually, I don't know. For me, it's, it's a toss-up, so. Really appreciate the opportunity to bring forth this proposal, and I'd like to invite the chief police to come up as well. This has been a collaborative effort. So just by way of introduction, Mr. Fred McNeil, Bill Moore, and some others have been leading this charge with the Ken Island Trail System, and it was a month or two ago that Fred and I, who are collaborating on a veteran initiative right now on Ken Island, had a conversation about what, what's the potential to do this here locally for the town. So we put together a couple slides. I feel like this is probably one of the easiest low-hanging fruit things that we could do, virtually no cost, volunteers, it's gonna make us look good, it's gonna make our folks feel safe. So just a couple slides to show you, the four things we're gonna kinda show you is, the model is based on the Ken Island Trail Patrol. You know why I got the slides doing that thing again?
Eric, you're killing me with it. It looks like five kids peeing in the river there, with a picture there, be careful.
I literally fixed this, so the slides would not auto-advance, but I'm gonna get it back to, so folks at home can hopefully not have any seizure activity as a result of looking at these. So we'll talk about what it is and what it isn't, the resources that are required, and then the ultimate proposal at the end. So I'm gonna ask Fred if he'll talk about the Ken Island Trail System itself.
Well, thank you all for letting me come in tonight, all right? I appreciate it. Bill Moore expresses his apologies, the pollen has gotten to him. Bill Moore expresses his apologies, the pollen has gotten to him, he's at home with about 27 different medications. He's my partner on the trail, so he apologizes. Basically, Gary Hoffman, about five years ago, came up with a great idea. Let me get some people on the Kent Island Trail that will help the county promote itself, help the sheriff's department promote itself, and help people on the trail. And what we did, we asked for volunteers, and we basically, from Madder Peak Beach to Kent Narrows, ride bikes up and down the trail. We help people with flat tires, chains that are falling off bikes. You'd be surprised, the number of people who come to the Kent Island Trail from other destinations have no idea where they can eat dinner, lunch, or what the heck's going on. We have no police functions at all. It's real important, I say that to you. We're not police officers, we don't pretend to be police officers, we are not allowed to try to play that role. And we don't want anybody on the volunteer force who wants to be a policeman. We leave that to the professionals. Our job is to promote the county, the sheriff's department on the Kent Island Trail, and like I said, the community as a whole. We give out lollipops, sheriff's badges, pencils, pens, you name it. And what we do, we just ride the trail back and forth. You'd be shocked at the number of people that have little problems. I mean, we've rescued people with flat tires, like I said, chains falling off, cats in a tree. I could tell you things, you'd look at me and say, this man is crazy, but we, we deal with that daily. But it was a great idea. The public relations department loves it with the county, because we just produce goodwill, okay? And we just simply say, hey, look, you need help, do you have questions? How can we help you? And that's all we do, okay? Volunteers on bikes, we, what we do when we ride our bikes, believe it or not, we bring in June, July, and August, water, which we give out, okay? Like I said, kids get sheriff's badges, women get nail files, all right, you name it, and we just give out, all promoting the county and the sheriff's department. And the idea, the thought behind it is, one, is another set of eyes and ears on the trail. If there is a problem, we would dial 911, just like a citizen. The other thing is, there are other people helping on the trail, and just simply, you know, our trail is not going to face the numbers. But you surprise how more comfortable people feel when they see someone with a yellow vest, riding a bike with some type of proper ID. You know what? Someone is watching this trail. Someone is watching and caring about me. So it's been a big success. It's all volunteer-based, team members, what we simply do when we go on, we have, we, we get volunteers, they have to be trained. The boss does that, and some simple etiquette, simple trail procedures, et cetera, et cetera. And every time we go on, Eric asked me this, we just, we just check in with a phone call. Hey, just want you to know, the volunteers are on the trail from 10 to 11. The sheriff gets a weekly, the chief would get a weekly schedule, tells them when people are on the trail, et cetera, et cetera. Hundreds assist it each year. I could sit here all night and I won't, but tell you stories. We've, we've gotten fishing rods out of the river, we've gotten people out of the river, all types of things. Fisherman's in, owns us about 10% of their profits, because we send everybody, no, we send them anyplace. But I think you would find it'd be the type of thing that promotes the town, promotes safety, and it just promotes the idea, you know, there's someone on the trail that's kind of watching over me. And it's in a simple procedure, I'll be quiet, we were talking about, if, if the chief would agree, we'd gather at the Town Warf, where there's a playground. And, you know, you do, you give out lollipops, you give out chief's badges or whatever, it just produces goodwill. Get on the bikes, go up towards docks, get on the trail, just ride the trail back and forth, hit the other playground by the mill stream park. Again, promoting the town, goodwill, and all of a sudden, representatives of, whether it's the sheriff's department or police department, these are the good guys, these are the good men, this is for men and women. If they can let a 76-year-old, one-eyed, one-legged man on it, believe me, we can get volunteers, all right? And it is, it's all volunteers. There's little or no cost, I want to make sure you understand that. We have our own bikes, we have our own yellow vest, whatever the chief wants us to do in terms of attire, we would do. But there's no cost. It doesn't cost anything, okay? Except for my hot air, I guess, that's okay.
We did take a couple of pictures that Fred was able to provide on this slide and the next one. So anything you just want to comment on quickly, Fred, on those?
Well, you can see what it's all about. Now, you don't have the numbers, obviously, on this, the Centerville Trail, but you set something up. You can see, we meet people, we talk to people. If I'm a mom with three kids on the playground, it's nice to see someone walking around, it's kind of, you know, keep an eye, make sure everything's okay. You can see the yellow vest we wear, and it's just low-key, it's low-key as again, and remember, this is all volunteers, there's bikes we ride. We also pick up trash. You know, Eric brought up a point to me, the sheriff asks us to go to events occasionally. He'll say, Fred, could you help us with a beer fest they're having in a shopping center on Kent Island? Can you help us, some other event? And we, we assist on that too. We'll bring our bikes, just stay in the background. I know there were some concerns about the, one of the events we had in town, that perhaps a new courthouse, you know, some people were doing some things they shouldn't have been. Well, you just have two of us sitting there, and remember, we don't do anything, except, excuse me, sir, could you please not trample all the daisies, all right? And if there is an issue, we don't deal with it, we let the professionals deal with it.
And I was thinking in particular that Judge Knight would be very happy if we utilized this during the Christmas parade. I know she had tremendous concern, and it just gives us some force multipliers and enablers, so. All right, we'll go to the next one. So we kind of talked about this, but I think just to reaffirm, they're not an arm of the police department, but do serve sort of at the pleasure. Sorry, if I had it accidentally. No arrest authority, obviously, so no badge, no gun, but these folks are certified in first aid and CPR, maps and information, the eyes and ears, don't you love it? Bottles of water, and really just promoting that, that safety assurance. Resources, so based on our conversation, volunteers, of course, are needed, they've already started recruiting.
You'll have to read faster.
Yeah. Fred and Bill Moore, they've already got the experience, chief is on board, I asked him to sit up here just in case there are questions. Two-hour training session. Minimal cost, T-shirts, identification, badges, whatever we want to do, but they're willing to do their own if we need to, maps and other information. Chief, I know, has lots of swag, things that we give away anyway. So they're looking for our endorsement this evening, work with the police chief on the training, obtain those volunteer identifiers, and then move out.
You're not going to wear any of that commander's gear, are you?
I still have my old Redskins starches. Every time they switch their names, it costs me 150 bucks. How does that go off with my wife? Not well.
I'm all for this, and thanks for coming in. I think it's a great idea. Consensus on this?
Absolutely.
All right, wonderful.
It's the easiest decision of the evening.
Thank you.
Good people.
Thanks, Fred. Let us know what you need, and chief, thank you for your support on this.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Red.
Okay, next agenda item is board and commission appointments. We can move all of these at one time, would be my preference, if somebody would like to do that.
So moved, all this list as presented.
You might, you might have to read.
Yeah, let me do that. Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve Jim Watson to the Board of Supervisors of Elections for a three-year term expiring April 2026. Frederick Bu to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term expiring April 2026. Carrie O'Connor to the Centerville Ethics Commission for a three-year term expiring April 2026. Sandy Simpson to the Parks Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring April 2026. Rich Ryan to the Park Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring April 2026. And finally, Dale B. Kraft to the Personnel Review Board for a three-year term expiring April 2026.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion about any of these folks? I'll just say thank you for your service to the town. All those in favor say aye. Well, we'll do Councilperson Worth.
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
President says aye. Motion carries unanimously. Purchase of the vacall truck. Mr. Matthews.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. As we discussed at the budget meetings, you folks approved the purchase of this particular piece of equipment. Since we had obtained the budget price, of course, there was a surcharge that they got hit with in that month and a half time. This seems to be the norm with everything. You have before you the request to go ahead and make the purchase. They happen to have one that they ordered to have in stock, that'll be here in June sometime. And if we get this approval, we can put our name on it, and it'll be ours. With this being funded out of the ARPA money, if it hits before July 1st, it'll be in this budget. If it hits after July 1st, when it's delivered and billed, then it goes to next year's budget. That's pretty much the, the short draft of it. We discussed it pretty much at length before.
Well, I will move approval to purchase of the vacall truck from Mid-Atlantic Way Systems at a price not to exceed $526,902.
Second.
Any discussion? We can just vote on this one.
Sorry. Does it matter which fiscal year this would fall in? Is there a benefit to one year or the other? Thank you very much. Back to you, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. Just for, I should have said this to begin with, this is also, this price is given under the National Joint Purchase Line. So it's pre-bid, pre-approved, other places, so that's reasonably only came back with the one price, still comparable to other brands.
You might want to stay here for just a second, so. Council had a memorandum related to 116 Holton Street and allocation there in your packets, but it wasn't on the agenda, it's on the agenda now. We can go ahead and clear this tonight. There's a memo here from the town manager. Do you want to speak to any of this? It's pretty straightforward.
It basically comes down to, it's been a vacant lot for many years, probably 20 years from what I'm being told. That was before I was here. There is a water service line ran to it. There is no meter there. Actually supposed to meet with the contractor either tomorrow or the following, the end of the following week to look at some other things as far as the sanitary sewer connection, but that's all on that, on the builder to take care of those things. So we're just requesting allocation for this property, and they will be charged the allocation fees required.
Sounds like they already paid them.
And that's possible too. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, no need to apologize. This is being put into that special allocation fund we have now, okay. Thumbs up from the finance manager, director, I don't know, chief, who knows? Is there a motion to approve this allocation?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith.
We'll now move into reports of boards and commissions. Mayor and municipal league?
Nothing to report today.
Council of governments?
Council of governments meets Wednesday, 6 o'clock, in Salterville.
All right.
There's others to attend. I'll be, I should be able to make it, and I'll bring up the plastic bag and see what happens.
I can't wait to hear from them. Economic development?
Thank you, sir. Yesterday evening, we hosted a panel discussion on the future of economic development in the town of Centerville. And we were blessed to be able to have QACTV there on a night that the Board of Ed was having its public meeting. And so they were able to record, it wasn't live, but I will, I have not had a chance yet to put it in an email to this council, but I'll share the link. It is on QACTV, the website. A lot of very, very good discussion was captured. And so I'm going to summarize that at our next meeting in 10 bullets or less, just some very interesting ideas that were thrown out, some very easy to implement and execute. Some, some out-of-the-box thinking, but not so crazy that we couldn't get on board. But I will bring that forward at the next meeting, and in the meantime, expect the link to the video. I think we met for less than an hour, so it's not too painful to, to get through it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Do we have anything from the Park Advisory Board? Did somebody could read? No? Okay. Planning Commission met last night. They continue to grapple with the community plan, the 10-year comprehensive plan, as required by state statute. And it seems to be some light at the end of that tunnel, generally speaking. And they will have a final site plan of the Board of Education building, which will be out on Ruthsburg Road, 304, in front of the YMCA in that lot near the Vincent Building and the, and the Y. So come out to that if you want to review that final site plan, which will be on the agenda two Wednesdays from now.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
The original plan of that project had a traffic circle where Kidwell intersects 304 and the driveway into the shopping center. And the county had run the road that direction. When the traffic circle was not approved, they did that little dog leg. Does this by chance go back to having that traffic circle in place?
It does not.
By our last chance to do that?
They have moved the entire building out of that right of way down, sort of moved it all south to get it out of that right of way. So I think there's potentially still, still the ability to do that. I don't know.
Maybe our last chance to.
Certainly.
To pursue that.
That's all for the Planning Commission. We don't have a town manager tonight, but we'll move to the chief of police, perhaps.
Good evening, honorable town council members. Tonight, on behalf of the Centerville Police Department, I would like to introduce to the council one of our newest members to the police force, Officer Sam Farrakine. If you would step forward, please. Officer Farrakine came to us in March of this year. He started his police career in 1991 in the state of Ohio, moved to Maryland in 2013, which he continued his law enforcement career. We are happy to have him as part of our force. He has approximately 30 years of law enforcement experience he's bringing to us. A lot of his training and experiences are revolving around instructor-type certification, so he's, he's a great asset to our department. So I would like to respectfully request one of the members from the town council, if they would do a swearing-in for Officer Farrakine.
So I've heard and seen lots of great things about you, so it's my honor to swear you in this evening. I'm going to turn the mic your way, just so folks can know if you can hear you. All right, please raise your right hand, say aye, pronounce your full name, and repeat after me.
Aye, Sam Farrakine Jr.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Officer for the Centerville Police Department.
Officer for the Department of Centerville Police Department.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
The town charter.
The town charter.
And laws and ordinances of the town of Centerville.
And laws and ordinances of the town of Centerville.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome to the town of Centerville, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Lieutenant Harris, would you, would you sit up front and center, please? Also, tonight, I'd like to recognize two of our officers, Lieutenant Harris and Officer Sam Farrakine from the Centerville Police Department, for a job well done. On March 26, 2023, at approximately 11:20 in the evening, Lieutenant Harris and Officer Farrakine from the Centerville Police Department responded to the area of 300 block of Little Timwell Avenue, in reference to a critically missing person. This call for service, they learned that the critically missing person was a 93-year-old male with dementia, had a history of walking off from their residence. The officers quickly gathered essential information from the caregiver and began exhaustive search of the area in an attempt to locate the missing person and bring them home safely. Officers, along with the assistance of the caregiver, found the critically missing person located within a vehicle near the residence at approximately 30 minutes after midnight. That was approximately one hour after initial call for service came out. The missing person was not alert and was checked for injuries by both officers. The missing person was recovered and found to be without injury, and returned to the residence without any further incident. I believe the officer's timely response to the call. I believe the officer's timely response to the call and due diligence may have prevented a worse outcome. It is my honor to recognize these two officers before the Town Council for their continuous demonstration of commitment to not only their department, but their community as well. Thank you, Lieutenant Harris and Officer Farrakane, for your dedication to service. And Chief?
You're here.
Yes, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. You have a great team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Attorney?
I can't follow that, so I have none.
Finance Officer? Director of Public Works?
Thank you.
Human Resources Manager?
No updates.
Before we move on from staff reports, I know our Town Attorney did not have a report, but I did wanna say thank you publicly. We've been chatting over email about digital signage, and so I just wanted to thank you for your work on that, and we will be bringing that back up again next time.
Citizens Forum? All right, we'll move into Council Roundtable. Councilperson Beecham.
Anything to discuss tonight? Thank you.
Councilperson Worth?
After attending the Planning Commission meeting last night, I kinda realized that maybe this would not be the best time to introduce a digital sign ordinance, considering the amount of work involved in that. Until they complete the community plan update, I think, they really do have a lot on their plate. So, I mean, you're welcome to work on that and, you know, arrive at a consensus or whatever, but I think as far as getting it introduced and all that, might wanna wait a bit.
And at one benefit, we have, our Planning Commission Chair had offered to help draft the ordinance in consultation with the Town Attorney, and based on what our consensus may or may not be as we move in that direction. So that was a hopeful offer, but I certainly take that under consideration.
Yeah, well, because she's also heavily involved with, actually readying the...
Exactly.
The community plan, so, yes, keep that in mind.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Councilperson Johnson?
I'll be brief. Just wanna remind everybody at home and here today that our first, first Friday of the season is tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in our town square. In the courtyard, we have performer Guthrie Matthews, who my wife and I went to high school with, a crowd favorite. He'll be performing for free, of course, and we'll have lots of food trucks, face painting, free outdoor arcade for the kids, and so much more. So hopefully, everybody can make it out, and we appreciate the Police Department's support and Public Works with just the hoods on the signs for parking. I guess we still have enough signs up to where we can still do hoods, even though we don't have meters, and of course, the picnic tables that we're graciously able to get from Public Works, and that's all I have.
Can the Finance Officer join us up here? I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you some questions that you're not gonna know the answer to off the top of your head. I was, while Karen comes up here, I met this week with Dave Wieland, who is the managing senior editor of the Spy newspaper chain. They are a series of digital newspapers that cover Easton and Talbot County very well, Cambridge and Dorchester County, and Chestertown as well. They have three pillars, news, local news, hyper-local news, as they call it, arts and culture, and they are interested in Centerville. They feel like this is a gap where they are not getting, the public is not getting enough information about the County Commission and the Town Council and the various things that are happening. And due to the advent of artificial intelligence, something that I am fairly dubious about, but they can basically turn out, to some extent, they can turn out news articles based on the very good recordings that QACTV does, and they're in the sort of phase of beta-testing this. So they've run a few other meetings through their content generator. I've seen them. You can't tell they're not made by human beings, which is a problem, but they're good, and we need coverage of this stuff. So I wanted, we had allocated in the budget money to have QACTV videotape the Planning Commission meetings.
That's correct.
And the Town Clerk reached out to QACTV. I think, like a lot of people, they're struggling with capacity, and also because of the Board of Education is meeting across the street at the same time, it wouldn't be live anyway, right? You'd have to go back and watch it, and while I'm sure all of us would do that every week up here, I'm not sure how many other people are gonna go back and watch Planning Commission videos. So I'm curious, how much did we allocate for that?
$3,000.
$3,000. I think we could take a fraction of that and potentially consider supporting what the Spy is trying to do. I would encourage maybe Dave Wieland to come in front of us, but I think, you know, what he's going to do is reach out to funders. He's got a very robust list of funders in other places, Chestertown and Easton. He's got some Centerville supporters already, Shore Bank, Wild River Upper School, I believe Gunston is a supporter of his as well. So they're making annual contributions to support. He's got a couple of people that work for him. I think it's a very good thing. If you're not checking out the Talbot Spy, the Chestertown Spy, I would encourage you to do that. It's an objectively nice job that they're doing. They covered the, they covered the Easton mayor race and council race very well this week, and I'm very enthusiastic about getting, you know, better news coverage of these, so people know what the heck we're doing here and can help hold us accountable. And we have an election coming up, and I hope, I hope everybody runs. I hope 15 people run. I think we ought to be, you know, they ought to be covering that election in the newspaper. So I'm for, I just wanted to sort of throw that out there. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but we should probably make that change in the budget, or we could do an amendment.
We could do, yeah, we could wait till the end of the year and reallocate with a budget amendment.
Perfect. General consensus, well, before we do that, just check out the Spy, if you have.
I have, and I'm all for it.
Cool. That's all I've got. Thank you. That is all I've got for my portion of the roundtable, except I will say, I will concur with Councilperson Worth's concerns about the sign ordinance. It is my understanding that the last time, I think it's important to know, Planning Commission spent a lot of time on the sign ordinance not that long ago. When did that wrap up? Right before I got on the council, I think. So 2020. Spent a ton of time on it, a ton of money, because we have, the Town Attorney does not work for free, and I think we really have to take a good, hard look at whether we wanna go back down that road. I guess my understanding is they started trying to get the American Legion a sign that would work for them. That's where they started to craft that ordinance, or at least part of that ordinance. Couldn't get there. Sounds easy in concept, let's get the American Legion the sign that they want. I think, I know I support that. I think it gets very complicated immediately after that. How do you candle watt hours and all kinds of things that they're gonna have to dive into, so I would be really cautious about sort of committing to that again.